I'd like to call the March 10, 2014 Williamson County Board of Commissioners to order. First item on our agenda is invocation and pledge, invocation by Commissioner Brian Bethard, pledge led by Commissioner Bert Shalafant. Please stand.
May we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for all your many blessings. Thank you for this time we have to come together and discuss the direction and future prosperity of our county. We ask for your guidance tonight as we make the decisions that affect the residents who live here. Thank you for those who protect us both abroad and at home. Thank you for the officers from our Sheriff's Department who are here with us tonight. And Father, we ask that you be with the families of Ennis Wallace, Sr., and fellow Commissioner Clyde Lynch tonight, as they go through their grief of those two individuals who are now with you. And lastly, Father, we have learned since our last meeting also that some of the county commissioners here tonight will take a respite from their service in this capacity to go on to serve in other ways. We thank you for them as well, for their time, their commitment, their service, their dedication, and their love for this county. Each of them made an indelible impact on this county during a period in which it saw some of its most change and its much prosperity. May they continuously be aware that their service to this community will never be forgotten and will always be appreciated. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is roll call. If you push your present button and confirm. All right, record the roll.
Absent, and Commissioner Ricky Jones absent.
And Commissioner Jones is on his way. He's, as we all know, he's Athletic Director at Fairview High School, and they had a late ball game, and he's pedaling as fast as he can. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the February 10, 2014 County Commission Meeting. I'll entertain a motion. Proper motion and second. Commissioner Shalafant, any corrections or deletions? I see none. Is it loaded on the machine line?
No.
No. All in favor, as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And they're adopted. Acceptance of the Highway Commission minutes. Copies were mailed to everyone. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Little the Second. All of those in favor, as they've been presented, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And they're adopted. Next, we have citizens communication. And we have none.
We do have an announcement. This vehicle needs to be moved.
Okay. All right, we've got a white Lexus out in the parking lot, 938 VHT, that needs to be moved. So it's, the sheriff says it needs to be moved, so if that's your vehicle. Next, we have communications and messages. We've got some late filed resolutions. Resolution 31423, 31424, 31425, 31426, 31427, and they're in your, on the agenda. So if there's no objections, yeah, I'll get that. We'll hear those. They are on your agenda. So if there's no objections, we'll hear those in order on the agenda. So we're good there. Then Resolution 31428 is not on your agenda. It's also a late file. But if there's no objection, we'll hear that in line with the rest of them. So we will hear those. Also, we've got three resolutions that have been pulled. Resolution 3146, Resolution 31421, Resolution 31422 are pulled, and we won't hear those tonight.
Stop holding on for having to hit pause with your mic.
Is this, is that better? Okay. I also like to thank Sheriff Deputies John Burks, Eddie Gully, and Bob, I'm gonna get this wrong, Repulsky. Thank y'all for being here. See, Deputy Dusty Rhodes and the sheriff are here also. Thank y'all. Next, we turn it over to County Mayor Rogers Anderson for proclamation.
As many of you know, in your packet, there is a proclamation declaring this month as the American Red Cross Month, and tonight we have with us a couple of the individuals from the American Red Cross as we read this proclamation. And if you'll go travel along with me in the proclamation process. March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes, those who reach out to help their neighbors when they are in need. And the American Red Cross heroes are always on the front lines every day. They volunteer their time, they give blood, they take life-saving courses or provide financial donations to help those in needs. We would like to remember our heroes here in Williamson County who give to help people in need. They work tirelessly to help in times of disasters when someone needs life-saving blood, or the comfort of a helping hand. They provide around-the-clock support to members of the military, our veterans, their families, teaching life-saving classes in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. All across this country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to hurricanes, tornadoes, floods, wildfires, the tragedy at the Boston Marathon, typhoons. And when an injured service member ends up in a hospital far from home, the American Red Cross offers comfort. When a hospital patient needs blood, the American Red Cross blood donors help them. When a lifeguard jumps in to save a drowning child, or someone steps up to help a heart attack victim, the Red Cross was there. We dedicate this time, the month of March, to all of those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and eliminate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of the time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. It's therefore that I, as the mayor here in Williamson County, do hereby proclaim March 2014 as the American Red Cross Month. With us tonight, we have John Mitchell, and I'll let him introduce the other individual to accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Tonight with me is Tony Way. Tony is one of nine, or actually 10, board members we have that serve year-round. So on behalf of our board members, the 175 volunteers that make up the National Trace Chapter, thank you to y'all for allowing us to be here tonight. But most importantly, just remember the citizens of the community that will need our services in their, maybe their worst day ever. We just thank you for y'all's support, partnership, and cooperation. Thank you so much.
We have another proclamation, and the copies are on your desk, and if y'all will allow me, I'll step down and read this. In the meantime, if Deputy Amy Cole could come up, and I understand maybe her mother's with her, and Sheriff, come up and meet you at the podium. The, as everyone was aware, in the news recently, we had a home invasion, and Detective Cole was on the job along with our 911 center. So we have this proclamation in appreciation for what she did, and if you'll allow me to read it. Whereas on the morning of February 26, 2014, while on routine patrol, Detective Amy Cole was notified through dispatch of a residential armed robbery, with suspects being tracked via cellphone tracker, heading north on I-65 in Williamson County. And whereas working in unison with Williamson County Emergency Communications telecommunicator Phyllis Dodd, Detective Cole was able to identify the suspect vehicle and passenger suspected to be one in connection with the robbery. And whereas throughout the surveillance and pursuit of the subject vehicle, Ms. Dodd and Detective Cole relayed information to Brentwood and Metro Law Enforcement personnel who were able to respond with assistance in the pursuit in the Metro Davidson County, where the suspects were apprehended and arrested. And whereas Williamson County is proud of the law enforcement and dispatch personnel involved in this pursuit, as they work together to continue to ensure we continue to have a safe community to live, work, and raise a family. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the citizens of Williamson County, this proclamation of appreciation is hereby presented to Emergency Communications telecommunicator Phyllis Dodd and Detective Amy Cole of the Williamson County Sheriff's Office for their alertness, professionalism throughout this pursuit, and we do hereby express our sincere appreciation to all the law enforcement individuals involved in apprehending the alleged robbery suspects. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand, cause the great seal of the county of Williamson to be affixed at Franklin this 10th day of March 2014, Jack Walton, Chairman Williamson County Board of Commissioners, Rogers Anderson, County Mayor. Next on the agenda is reports of county offices.
If I could, I'd have Budget Director Nina Graham come up and give us a snapshot of the county of the activities. Jack, are we going out of order on the citizens communication?
We didn't have any.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. This evening in your packets, we have three of our usual monthly reports. The Cool Springs Conference Center for the month of January, Williamson County had to pay to Cool Springs Conference Center $12,669.10. That brings us a yearly net total of $83,093.76 that we've collected. Also in your packet this month, we have our January Privilege Tax Report. Those are still coming in pretty strong. We collected a little over $1 million for the month of January. Also in your packet, we have our January month-end budget report. Our expenses and revenues are tracking in line for this time of year. Is anyone having questions?
Any questions for Nina? I see none. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you've got a very lengthy meeting, a lot of items to cover, but I'll entertain any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions for the mayor? Commissioner Jones?
Fire coverage issues that we might have in the Fairview/Williamson County area pertaining probably to insurance ratings more than anything, I know that's probably over all of our heads, but for job titles anyways.
Let me take you back, Commissioner, to about two years ago. Up until two years ago, the way that our not-for-profit, our rescue squads, whether at Patensville, here in town, College Grove, Arrington, all of our volunteer men and women that serve in our unincorporated area, the way the county commission for many years has funded those activities is providing the equipment, some of their necessary equipment that they have, along with some of their overall operations, but not including the salaries. We build buildings for them all throughout the county. Oftentimes, many of those locations also have an ambulance station. I'd be the first to admit that Fairview was a little different twist in the way that we funded that two years ago, and it was to help both the Fairview City and to help the Williamson County Rescue Squad, which services that area out there. But two years ago, the city leaders in Fairview decided that the $80,000 that we were giving them on an annual basis, plus the availability of equipment and support to them, they didn't feel like that was enough, and so they asked us for a doubling of the fees, as you're well aware of. And those fees were going from $80,000 to approximately $156,000, if I remember correctly, around $160,000. And that was just too much that I felt like the budget could bear. So we asked them to reconsider, and they said no. So essence, what they were doing at that time, they were providing services to our unincorporated area away from the Fairview residents who pay those property taxes. When a call went out outside of Fairview City limits, they responded. That kept our five-points, five-point rescue guys in place, so that they didn't have to always run out to those calls. Many of the calls that you see in the unincorporated area oftentimes are elderly that may slip and fall. Many, many calls are sent out other than just for fire. Well, taking their information they had, we and you all approved and agreed that we would go ahead and move our operations to include the Fairview unincorporated area, and we opened up a fire location in record time out at the old Pinewood School, the old school. And on a temporary basis, we had another site that we put a station out at, and so the rescue squad staffed those two as the best they can on a volunteer basis. What that triggered was, many of you in this room, if you live in the unincorporated areas or even inside the city areas, all services are provided through your insurance company on a homeowner's. They rate those ISO, Insurance Services Offices, rates each individual area. Now, some of the larger companies do not necessarily use the ISO rating, but the ISO rating tells you that you're so many miles away from a fire station, or so many miles away from a fire hydrant. And the further that you are away from those areas that aren't protected, like you would see here in Franklin, they charge a premium, and they charge a surplus. So many of those people out in that area, when those services were terminated from Fairview coming back out to the unincorporated area, they had significant change in their ISO rating. Where we are today on that is that we've asked Todd Horton, who could not be with us tonight, and our emergency management personnel, they're at another place tonight, they have contacted them trying to get, trying to work through the ISO rating to get those ratings back down to a reasonable respectable rate for those homeowners. That's not doing them a lot of good right now, and so therefore you're getting the phone calls of what happened, and why hasn't this been resolved? It is out of your hands, however, it is being appropriately handled by the rescue squad to try to get that ISO rating brought back to a standard that was triggered some two years ago. Those same things happened in the 4th District, or potentially could have happened in the 4th District, and then on the far end of our county, that you have a five-mile rate issue, put these stations. If you move that station one mile to the east, the folks one mile to the west get a different rating. And so we try to logistically staff those to the best of variability that we can. But some of those phone calls are being worked on through an ISO rating change. That's the best answer that I can give you at this time, based on the trigger mechanism of the Fairview saying they didn't want to come out into the county to respond to unincorporated calls.
Thank you. Any further questions? I see none. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Next, we have Director of Schools, Dr. Mike Looney.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's good to see you. We have no business before you tonight. I'll keep my report very, very brief. The district operations are going exceedingly well. Our boys and girls are hard at work. Our teachers are in their classrooms working. With some luck, we'll be out on spring break after Friday, a full day of work. I do want to take this opportunity to thank the County Highway Department for their quick work during the most recent inclement weather days. We were able to get our schools back open and our kids back at school in a very timely fashion. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Danner.
Just one quick question, Dr. Looney, for the record. We saw the bond issues come in, and then they got pulled, but for the half that you're going to ask for.
Yes, ma'am.
But you're going to bring those back after you, your board approves the zoning for that school in April? You're doing the zoning in April? And the money?
Yes, ma'am. The school board is expected to establish zoning parameters for me to go by at this next meeting. Based on those parameters, I expect to go to the school board with zoning specifics, and the zoning specifics are those students that will be zoned to the opening schools in 2016. We will, in the meantime, close the bid on those two projects. So we will have two things for your consideration. One, the actual cost, based on the bid price of both projects, and we will have identified which families will be attending the new schools.
What about families who will be affected, may not be attending the new school, but they may be rearranged because of the new school? Will all the families that will be affected by the new school zoning know where they're going to be zoned before you ask for the funding?
Well, depending on what zoning parameters I get at the March meeting, I'm not sure I can answer that question completely. My expectation would be, and consistent with what the board's directive has been, is to notify the families that will be attending the new school.
All right. We'll follow up in April.
Any other questions for Dr. Looney? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, I know this is going to be a long meeting, but I just wanted to mention that for the students that would be applicable for this, sister cities of Franklin and Williamson County are accepting applications for exchange students that will be going to either Carlton Place, Canada, which is near the capital, Ottawa, where the Ottawa Senators and the Predators are playing, I think, tomorrow night. But anyway, also, the other place would be Bad Soden, Germany. And these are great opportunities. We've tried to get the word out, but have been slight on getting some applications from students. This is a rare moment, folks, for us to be, have international visits that will make a great experience for our students. So I just wanted to have people be aware of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, I had asked that rabies clinic notification be put at each of your desks. April is rabies clinic month, and every Saturday through April, you will find a listing of where the shots can be given for dogs and cats, $10 each, and let's make sure that we get the message out there. Others can find it online, or they can call and get it scheduled. But every Saturday, from April 5th through April 26th, we can have our animals vaccinated against rabies, and we want to be sure in doing that. Attached to that same listing, I just had to ask that you be notified of our wonderful record for February. We told you before that our open shelter had always had a goal of increasing adoptions and decreasing euthanasia. I'm proud to tell you that in February, we got below the 10% mark. That is almost unheard of for an open shelter. We've had, in communities around us, in counties around us, there've been as high as 78% euthanasia rate. Our rate for dogs and cats received this last month was 8.5%. Are we happy that it's 8.5? No, we wish it was zero. But is that a good goal? It is, and I want to thank Laura and all of her staff. We had 200 animals come in, we had 228 adopted, and we had 8.5 euthanasia rate for dogs and cats. That's exceptionally good, and we know we'll have a spring explosion, but if we get the message to spay and neuter, maybe every year we'll see fewer. So I'm very proud of what our community has done and what our animal control facility has done.
Thank you for that update, Commissioner Hayes. Moving on, we've got elections and appointments. Emergency Communications District Board of Directors, four-year term expiring March 2018. At-large position, term expiring, Mike Thompson, nominee Greg Galfano. Mr. Barnwell, Commissioner Smith the Second. Any other nominees? I see none. All in favor of Greg Galfano, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And he is confirmed. Williamson County Regional Planning Commission, four-year terms expiring March of 2018. Term expiring, Susan Fisher, Robin Baldry. Nominees, Susan Fisher, Robin Baldry. Commissioner Hayes, Commissioner Wilson the Second. Any other nominees? See none. All in favor of these two ladies, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And they are confirmed. Moving on, Highway Commission, two-year term expiring March of 2016. Southwest District, Wayne Davis, term expiring, nominee Wayne Davis. Commissioner Hancock, Commissioner Jones the Second. All in favor of Commissioner Wayne Davis, signify by saying aye. Opposed? So he's confirmed. The Southeast District, term expiring, Charlie Bennett, nominee Charlie Bennett. Commissioner Hester, Commissioner Herbert the Second. Any other nominees? See none. All in favor of Charlie Bennett, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And he is confirmed. Moving on, Industrial Development Board, six-year terms expiring March of 2020. Term expiring, Diane Ellis, nominee Diane Ellis. Burgess Oliver, nominee Burgess Oliver. Term expiring, Dan Parsons, nominee Dan Parsons. Commissioner Ford, Mr. Herbert the Second. Any other nominees? I see none. All in favor of those people, signify by saying aye. Opposed? They are confirmed. Zoning Appeals Board, five-year term expiring March 2019. Term expiring, Sue Workman, nominee Sue Workman. Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Hayes the Second. Any other nominees? All in favor of Sue Workman, signify by saying aye. Opposed? And she is confirmed. Moving on, we have the consent agenda, and only thing on the consent tonight is the notaries. So I'll entertain a motion for those. Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Jones the Second. It's loaded on the board. If you're in favor of the consent agenda, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record. Record to vote, Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
And they are confirmed. Moving on, we have a, we have no unfinished business, so new business under zoning, we have a public hearing. Resolution 314-4, resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to adopt amendments to the 2013 official zoning map originally adopted May 14, 2012 regarding a map correction. Mike?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike Matheson, Planning Director.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. The property in question is located on North Berry's Chapel Road, and this map amendment is simply to correct a mapping error that occurred when updating the official zoning map back in 2008. At that time, the boundary between two zoning districts was inadvertently and incorrectly shifted so as to include this property in the Neighborhood Conservation zoning district. The correct zoning for the property is suburban infill and conservation, and this map amendment will fix that mistake. The property owner has requested this change. The Planning Commission has voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendment, and staff also recommends approval of this map amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. I'll now open the public hearing. If you want to speak to this resolution, please come forward, state your name and According to the rules, you would have five minutes to address this. So I now open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak to that? I see none. So going once? All right, we'll close that. All right. So moving on to Resolution 314-4, resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to adopt amendments to the 2013 official zoning map originally adopted May 14, 2012 regarding a map correction.
Is there approval?
Commissioner Little, Commissioner Green II. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 314-4, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record to vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding Resolution 314-5, resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted May 14, 2012 as it relates to areas of slippage soils. Mike?
Okay, this is an amendment to the text of the zoning ordinance related to the protection of steep topography and slippage soils. In general, this section of the zoning ordinance prohibits land disturbance in areas of very steep slopes, which are those in excess of 25%, and also on areas of slippage soils exceeding 15%. There is currently an exclusion to this prohibition for passive recreational uses, minor utilities, and driveways, and we feel like that exclusion is entirely appropriate. As we have been administering the zoning ordinance, we noticed that this same exclusion does not exist for slippage soils in excess of 15%, and we feel like that same exclusion is appropriate for this particular section of the ordinance. And so this text amendment would add that exclusion to the prohibition, subject to, of course, proper reports, design, and supervision by a geotechnical engineer. The Planning Commission has unanimously voted to recommend approval of this text amendment, and staff recommends it as well.
Thank you, sir. I'll now open the public hearing regarding Resolution 314-5, and as before, when you come up, please state your name and address. So I'll now open the public hearing. No takers on this one either, I assume. We'll close the public hearing. Now moving on to Resolution Number 314-5, a resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text originally adopted May 14, 2012 as it relates to areas of slippage soils.
Is there approval?
Commissioner Little, Commissioner Green II. Any discussion? Commissioner Bane?
Yes, we still have our lawyer here.
We do.
Using the term "slippage soils" instead of "coluvial soil" or whatever it is, where, what does that get us into? If you think clay is slippage and I think clay's not slippage, where are we?
I'm going to defer that to Mike and Christie.
Commissioner Bane, I can attempt to address that. We do define slippage soils in the zoning ordinance, and I don't have it right in front of me, but they're basically Delros soils.
There is a difference.
Yes, sir, there sure is.
Okay, that's all I'll warn you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions, Mike. First of all, just generally, did, was there a specific event or request that triggered this?
Yes, ma'am. We were discussing a potential project with an applicant and came across this and, again, realized that the exclusion that is already in the zoning ordinance for the steep slopes really should have been and probably was intended to be also applicable to the slippage soils. And again, this is only for those passive recreational uses, minor utilities, and driveways, and those are uses that tread pretty lightly, and so we felt like that that exclusion with, of course, the safeguard of the geotechnical reports was appropriate.
Thank you. But isn't it, isn't it true that coluvial soil, if it is present, should not be disturbed at all? In other words, you're saying it's okay to put a driveway there, but, in fact, it's not stable soil. That's why it's called slippage. And so therefore, I wouldn't support even a minor engineering event taking place that would disturb that soil, particularly if it's slippage soil on a steep slope. So I don't think I can support this because it seems to me that the restrictions are logical, because that is a very, very difficult situation to engineer around. In other words, I know you can engineer around a lot of things, but that seems to be one that there are situations where it just shouldn't be disturbed, or you're going to have basically a landslide.
Well, I guess in response to that, I'm not an engineer.
Right.
But we did discuss this with the county engineer.
Right.
Who I think is also, who I know is also in support of the request. And I believe there are ways to engineer around it, but we did feel like with the exclusion, there needed to be that report and that oversight from the geotechnical engineer. So I do understand your point. I can't speak to it directly from an engineering standpoint, but we did discuss this with the Engineering Department Director.
Okay. And then I had one more question. Under, under steep slopes, you're using the minimum size of the steep slope, saying that if it's less than 5,000 square feet, you're using all the area around it. Why wouldn't you just not build on the super steep slope? In other words, why would you allow building? And I understand you're using the contiguous area to come up with your, with your formula, but why couldn't you have a wording that just says the contiguous area, obviously?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, and that's language that's always been in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And that's designed so that if there's a very small area on a site that exceeds that percentage, but it's not really a prominent feature or a sensitive environmental feature, then there can be that exclusion to take into account those kind of aberrations on a piece of property.
Right, right, right. I guess I sort of want to just take the aberration out and let them build on the area that's contiguous, but that's just, just me and a non-engineering thought process.
Sure.
So I have just a problem with the slippage soils and the allowance. Thank you.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mike. This does a good job of identifying the slopes and the slippage and the potentials for those kind of hazards. Is there any way that by vetting it out, we can also determine areas that are susceptible to sinkholes?
We do, as a matter of fact.
Down the road somewhere?
Yes, sir. There is a separate section of this article that deals just with carst features like sinkholes. So they already have to be identified and protected on a site.
Okay, so it don't need to be one and all together?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. You ready to vote? Tom, did you have follow-up?
Yeah.
Mike, did I also make sure I understand this? That's all this is. Are you saying if there's coluvial soil, you can't build a house, but you can build a driveway? Is that what I understand?
Yes, sir. Only under certain conditions, and again, with the oversight of a geotechnical engineer.
I thought that was right, but I wanted to find out.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 314-5, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record to vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty, yes. Two, no.
Two, no. Resolution passes. Resolution 314-6 has been pulled. Moving on to Resolution 314-7, public hearing, which is resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to adopt amendments to the 2013 Williamson County zoning ordinance originally adopted May 14, 2012 regarding parking within rural retreats. Mike?
Okay, thank you again. Section 1705B3 of the zoning ordinance specifies that required off-street parking areas must be paved. However, there are certain exclusions from that paving requirement, and those pertain to single-family homes, agricultural uses, temporary uses, and also parking areas that are very small, three spaces or less. This particular text amendment would add rural retreat uses to that list of uses that are exempt from that paved surface requirement. And staff feels that this exemption is appropriate, particularly given the very rural nature of these kind of uses. The Planning Commission has voted unanimously to recommend approval of the text amendment, and staff recommends approval of it as well.
Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself. It's a public hearing, so I'll now open the public hearing. Again, if you want to comment on this resolution, come forward, state your name and your address. So the public hearing's now open. All right, I see none. Last call. We'll close the public hearing. So moving on to the resolution, Resolution 314-7, resolution of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners to adopt amendments to the 2013 Williamson County zoning ordinance originally adopted May 14, 2012 regarding parking within rural retreats. Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Commissioner Little II. Any discussion? See none. You ready to vote? Did you have an explanation, Commissioner Smith?
Just want to, Ms. Chairman, thank you. I want to extend my appreciation to the staff for working through this issue. It certainly affected one of my constituents, and it just makes sense not to pave over the thing that makes a rural retreat what it is. So thank you to the staff.
All right. Mr. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 314-7, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record to vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Let's see, where are we? Eight, two, okay. Resolution 314-8, we've got a public hearing again, a resolution to amend the official zoning map originally adopted May 14, 2012 as it relates to amending the zoning district of properties within Two Rivers subdivision. Mike?
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. These last four zoning resolutions are all map amendments or rezonings in the Old Hillsborough Road, Del Rio Pike area. You're going to consider these last four resolutions separately, of course, but because they're all very similar requests, I thought I'd spend just a couple of minutes and give you some background information and some context that pertains really to all four of these requests. And then I'll come back up and provide some brief comments on the resolutions individually as they come up on the agenda tonight. So in your agenda packets that you received in the mail, you have an existing zoning map and a proposed zoning map for each of these four rezoning items on your agenda. But we also thought it would be helpful to you to see sort of a composite view so that you can see all of those parcels on one map, and then also see the result. Should you approve all four of these resolutions, what that zoning map would look like. And so Christie has passed out that composite map, and I want to spend just a couple of minutes, mostly on the first page, which is the current zoning. The relevant zoning districts are those that are colored either in the bluish shade or the dark green shade or the lighter green shade, and I'll explain what those are. The bluish color represents the suburban infill and conservation zoning district, which is essentially a one-unit-per-acre zoning district. The light green color represents the rural preservation I zoning district, which is also a one-unit-per-acre zoning district. And then the dark green color represents the rural preservation V zoning district, which is a zoning district that allows a maximum density of one unit per five acres. And this is the basic zoning pattern that has existed out in this area since the late 1980s. There are 54 property owners who are requesting tonight that their properties be rezoned from their present zoning, which is a combination of suburban infill and conservation and rural preservation I, so those one-unit-per-acre zoning districts, to the rural preservation V zoning district. And we have signed petitions from the owners of each of those properties. Essentially, these property owners are requesting a downzoning of their properties in that the requested zoning district is more restrictive than the existing zoning district from the standpoint of allowable residential density. In evaluating these kinds of requests, we always look to the county's comprehensive land use plan for what guidance it might give in these matters. In this case, staff does not believe that the current zoning is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. However, an argument can also be made that the proposed zoning is not inconsistent with the overall goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And so based on that, coupled with the fact that the property owners in this case are voluntarily requesting that a more restrictive zoning district be applied to their properties, staff is recommending approval of all four of these map amendments. Additionally, the Planning Commission has voted unanimously to recommend approval of all four of these map amendments. One final general note before getting into the specifics of Resolution 314-8, and that is that two of these final four resolutions will need to be amended on the floor because some of the property owners have withdrawn their request. Those relate to Resolutions 3-149 and 3-141, and when we get to those resolutions, we'll be sure to list the map and parcel numbers of those properties for you. So with that bit of background underway, related to this current resolution, which is 3-148, this is a request to rezone the 19 parcels that are in the Two Rivers subdivision from their present zoning, which is rural preservation I, to rural preservation V. Again, staff recommends approval of this request, and the Williamson County Regional Planning Commission has voted unanimously to also recommend approval of this map amendment.
Thank you, sir. We'll have a public hearing, and the public hearing will relate to Resolution 314-8, which pertains to the Two Rivers subdivision. Likewise, if you'll come forward and state your name and your address, so now the public hearing is open.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Howard Wall, a resident of 1507 Starlight Lane in Two Rivers, and I speak today in support of the rezoning requests that we and dozens of our neighbors have made. I have a great deal of respect for the members of this commission, for the way that you have led our county, making sure that we maintain and preserve our outstanding quality of life. of life. In many ways, I do not want to take time out of your busy agenda tonight to speak to what should be a no-brainer. The facts are these: the individual homeowners have requested a rezoning of their own property to be consistent with the rural preservation objectives of the land use plan. The staff recommends approval. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. But every morning when I drive up Old Hillsborough Road on my way to work and see construction underway at Hillsborough Cove, I'm reminded that we cannot take anything for granted. We cannot assume that even something that seems like a no-brainer is going to be approved unless we, as local citizens, are willing to speak up and speak out and let you, our elected officials, know how we feel. The written reports contain a lot of very good information for you about land use planning, zoning policy, and environmental preservation, but I wanted to make sure that you understand this vote tonight is really about people, the people born in Williamson County and the people that chose to move to this county for our wonderful way of life. Over 20 years ago, when my children were three years and three months old, my wife and I decided that Williamson County was the place that we wanted to raise our children. We moved to a house on five acres on Old Hillsborough Road, being told that our home and all the homes past the river were zoned for five-acre minimum lots. In 2006, we reaffirmed our commitment to Williamson County by building a home in Two Rivers and also believed that we were protected with zoning and subdivision restrictions that limited home to one home for, per five acres, and that high-density construction could not be done because of these protections that we had in place. Last year, we and many of our neighbors were shocked to discover that the zoning did not match up with the land use plan called rural preservation, and that development of Old Hillsborough Road in a way that would destroy the rural character of the land was being considered. My neighbors rallied to correct this mistake, and that's why we are here tonight. The beautiful landscape of our part of the county is a treasure. It is part of what encourages people to live and work and put their children in the schools in this county, and we are doing our part to preserve that by voluntarily asking that our properties be rezoned to make sure that future development is done in the full public spotlight. On behalf of my Two Rivers neighbors, thank you for your work on behalf of our county, and thank you for your consideration of this request.
My name is George Siders. I live at 4200 Two Rivers Lane in the Two Rivers neighborhood, and I am, uh, providing some brief comments on, in support of Item 314-8, uh, moving Two Rivers properties to RP5 from RP1. Two Rivers is a five-acre minimum subdivision that was developed in 2005, and the developer and the original, uh, residents, uh, saw, saw, built into the covenants, a way to protect our part, little part of Williamson County. Now, we know development's going to happen, and, uh, we, we know that, but we think that our, Two Rivers is a RP5, um, is a model neighborhood for what we think the rest, the, our part of Williamson County should, uh, should, should look like. When our, our, uh, the current development plans and future expansion in this area of the county are really putting at risk the reason I moved here from California just two years ago. I love the open vistas, I love the, uh, the landscape, and I love, even love our little tiny country roads. Um, higher, higher-density zoning, I think would put these all at risk. Um, I hope you will support, uh, Item 314-8 as well as 314-9, 10-11, so that we can make a contiguous RP5 zone that protects, uh, the neighborhood that we've come to love and made, decided to make our homes in. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, good to see you here. My name is Jim Scouten. I live at 1048 Barrel Springs Hollow Road in, uh, five-and-a-half acres of woods that we have owned for 15 years in a subdivision that, as far as we can tell, was platted about the time I graduated from high school. It is minimum five acres. It is, of course, west of Old Hillsborough Road. Uh, it's Forest Home Farms, although I don't think anybody thinks of it that way anymore. I am here to speak in support of what will turn out to be 54 property owners on the east side of Old Hillsborough by the time your evening is over and along Del Rio, this being the Two Rivers folks at the moment, uh, everything west of the bank of the Harpeth River who have voluntarily requested to downzone to five acres minimum. Uh, it is permanent downzoning if you pass these resolutions so that no future speculator may contemplate some smaller divisions of their neighborhoods on their property. Now, the Two Rivers requests and all the petitions that you will consider tonight, uh, we expect you to support tonight, I will tell you that, they are two things. I would suggest they are unprecedented, that 80% of the property owners are voluntarily requesting their land be downzoned to five-acre minimum lots for any future development. A developer would suggest they are, uh, they are, uh, devaluing their property. Uh, we would suggest quite the opposite, they're protecting the value of their properties by protecting the open and historic spaces on both sides of Old Hillsborough Road. The second comment I would make on these requested downzonings, uh, these all exactly match, as you've heard from staff, the county's award-winning land use plan. Uh, we didn't know you had won an award for it until we woke up to the threat in our neighborhood. Congratulations. It's such a good plan, you won a state award, a national award? It's on display on your website if you haven't seen it. But five months ago, we didn't know that, and I do want to tell you something about some of the people in this room tonight. I will not claim them all, but I have seen video of your county commissions. Uh, it must be clear to all of you that you have a great deal of interest in how this commission is managing development, certainly in our area of the county District 9. Those of us here did not know each other before we found a threat in our midst that would begin the conversion of scenic Old Hillsborough property to something like Brentwood, perhaps Bellevue in the extreme. Uh, 95% of the residents of Williamson County don't pay any attention to county government, uh, but we are now paying attention ever since we discovered a threat in our neighborhood. We started with a neighborhood mailing list that had been used for lost dogs and the exchange of recipes, and we grew it, uh, adding in other neighborhoods, Mount Pier Farms, Cottonwood, and the email addresses of those concerned citizens who met each other for the first time at the initial organizing meetings. We printed and posted protest signs against the out-of-the-area developer. We put the heat on to the degree that his agents are not welcome to list property anywhere in our area west of the Harpeth. We found we had great expertise and a wide range of skills as we got to know each other. We have lawyers, designers, former road-building contractors.
Excuse me, sir.
Sir.
We're talking about Two Rivers subdivision here.
We are indeed.
So, we, we need to stay on that topic.
And you don't want to know what we have been doing and the nature of the problem as we see it, sir?
We've got other resolutions that will address that. This public hearing is for the Two Rivers subdivision only.
Indeed, and I am speaking to that.
Okay.
If I may?
You may.
Uh, you have heard, uh, or will hear from Dory Bowles of the Harpeth River Watershed Association, expressing her concerns about pollution and the effect of development of greater density along this sensitive and, uh, river that has great difficulty with pollution already. Uh, we took our concerns, and here is the point, sir, if I may. We took our concerns, our traffic studies, and certainly our opinions, to your planning commission to find they weren't the least bit interested. We also learned a good deal about your planning commission, that it's largely populated by appointees who have backgrounds in real estate development or are currently brokers. You have just approved a broker for an extended term. So, we could say that it's good to have volunteers with that expertise who could understand performance bonds, zoning issues, and that sort of thing. Uh, we see your planning commission differently. We see them as members of the old-boy network of developers who have gotten rich turning grassland into properties.
Again, sir, again, we're talking about the Two Rivers subdivision. We're, we're not here to chastise the planning commission or anyone else. If you can keep on topic of Two Rivers, the, this is what the public hearing's about, this public hearing, okay?
All right, sir.
All right.
I would like to point out that all of these resolutions you'll hear tonight, including this one on Two Rivers, are appropriate to your award-winning land use plan that your planning commission is not enforcing. So, we are doing, as a group, and I told you something in the background of why there's a group, the work you did not do to rezone to match the land use plan when you adopted it. Uh, we intend to help you do the rest of that work. If I may, it's good to meet all of you tonight going into this political season. I'm sorry if you're distressed that I'm off track, but you need to know what has happened along Old Hillsborough and Del Rio that tonight includes the residents of Two Rivers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see none. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Resolution 314-8, a resolution to amend the official zoning map originally adopted May 14th, 2012, and relates to amending the zoning district of properties within Two Rivers subdivision. Uh, and I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Brockman and Commissioner Kestner the second, uh, you want to address this?
Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Um, and members of the commission and the public here tonight, um, I just think it's important to preface, uh, the res, this resolution and the next three to say there is, there is context, as, as Mike Madison has, has addressed. Um, it's just, it's, the effort is truly unprecedented, and I want to thank the community of stakeholders who have come out tonight to support rural preservation along Old Hillsborough Road and Del Rio. Uh, the Two Rivers, um, development came on board after, uh, the, these petitions had begun. It was voluntary on their part, they felt strongly. I have been overwhelmed. It's been a groundswell of support out along this area, and I think it's so important tonight that we shine a light on what makes this particular area special. It is an asset to Williamson County, and it should be thought of that way. I want to support, obviously, uh, the voluntary petitions here tonight, but just to say that it is, it is supported as a supermajority in this community, not even, not, not only the people who have signed petitions who are landowners. It has been overwhelming support from the community at large. Over 90% want to see rural preservation, and they want to see it zoned RP5, Rural Preservation Five. You know, these are stakeholders. They need our support, they need our leadership. Um, I hope you will get a sense of the value, um, of, of this area, and it's, it's, it is a scenic, you know, it, it's an scenic historic landscape. I had a planning commissioner say, "Well, what makes your area so special, Commissioner Brockman? We've had development on the east side and it's just rolling over us." And I said, "Well, you know what? We didn't get recognized by scenic America as a land cha, last, uh, last-chance landscape for nothing 12 years ago." We have historic and natural resources in this forest home area that make, one of the reasons that makes Williamson County special, and so people are coming out and recognizing that and speaking tonight. You know, so many of the issues that you never hear go through the planning commission, and development happens. This is different. Were we galvanized by what happened? Yes, that's how it all started, and you can say, "Well, why change now? Because we've been through the comprehensive plan and we've been through zoning," but sometimes you need a catalyst, and we had a catalyst this summer. So, how did we get here? A 34-acre parcel on Old Hillsborough Road was proposed for 20 houses on one-acre lots. No one could believe it because no one had ever done it before, and no one thought that one-acre density was even allowed along this corridor. But we learned that the land use plan calls for rural preservation. If you think one-acre subdivisions are rural preservation, I, I think you might need to get your head examined, because Old Hillsborough... The, the basic premise is that to preserve large lots and farms, that's why you, we still have them along Old Hillsborough. They say to recognize a historic property. If someone came back from 100 years ago, would they recognize the area? And I say, "They would." Has there been development? Yes, there have been houses on five acres. That's what's happened. And so, this is a wonderful example of three reasons why this rezoning is so important to look at and even go beyond this and think further about how we can protect these wonderful resources. Number one, property owner support, it's overwhelming. Number two, the topography. When you look at the map, it's so obvious, it's the Harpeth River along with the West Harpeth forming this boundary. That should have been the boundary for the RP5. Now, we're getting it right. You know, we, we're not in the Franklin-Growth boundary out there, we're not, we don't have sewer, and so rural preservation five is the correct designation for this area. The long-range goal of the plan says, "Single-family residential development must tread lightly on the rural landscape through development either on very large lots or development in a form that is consistent with the rural landscape with significant amounts of open space." People say it should have happened in 2012. We've had an alarm go off and the community has mobilized, and I am so proud of this area for standing up and doing something so groundbreaking. When you look at the big ship, big picture from our long lens, this truly represents the inherent value of rural preservation for the benefit of all in Williamson County and future generations.
Thank you. Well, to say that my constituents were astounded and upset when they saw these 20 a, 20 homes going in on one-acre lots is an understatement. And as you know, zoning is our responsibility as the county commission, and we do have an award-winning land use plan, and we should aspire to implement it. It was adopted in 2007, and one of the provisions called for an 18-month implementation plan, and I think we kind of blew it at that time as a county. Uh, interestingly, we have a conflict between the land use plan and our current zoning ordinance. Now, I know I'm putting staff in a bad position, they're, they're amazing at striking a balance. Uh, there are some bizarre exceptions in the land use plan that, that allowed one-acre rural preservation zoning. Now, as Mary points out, rural preservation on one-acre lots is a pretty oxymoronic term. I don't think that people would ever describe Green Hills or West Mead as being rural or preserved. Uh, and it begs the question, you know, why are we required to live with zoning mistakes that were made back in 1998, or 1988, excuse me? Section 103 of the zoning ordinance itself states very simply and very emphatically that the purpose of this ordinance is to implement the land use plan. Section 105 goes even further and states that, quote, "To the extent that this ordinance is or becomes inconsistent with these adopted plans, i.e. the land use plan and specific area plans adopted pursuant thereto, it should be amended to become or remain consistent with the adopted plans," end quote. That's pretty clear. Our zoning ordinance actually subordinates itself to the land use plan. It didn't have to do that, but it, it did, and that was in 2012. I think those are powerful words. The mistake that was made in the zoning ordinance that goes back to 1988 is that Highway 46, Old Hillsborough Road, was used as the natural boundary between the, the rural preservation five and then this, this one-acre zoning. And the real boundary, the appropriate boundary, as staff points out in its reports, you know, should have been the river. Uh, you know, we are a very bucolic area, and you only develop bucolic once and then it's gone forever. I have never seen anyone go out and acquire small homes or single-family homes and assemble a little farm. That just doesn't happen. Um, we're blessed, we have the, you know, so many historic registered homes in our area, the Meeting of the Waters, 1809, that's 33 years after the signing of the Declaration of Independence. That's unbelievable. Old Natchez Trace, that was a road used by Native Americans before we ever got Old Natchez Trace, that was a road used by Native Americans before we ever got here. When I look at the lots that are now suggested to be, to stay 1 acre, they're little strips. It's as though someone sliced slices of cheese off of a block. You know, that was all one huge farm years and years ago. And the bowling alley-shaped 10-acre and 20-acre and even 30-acre lots that stretch from Highway 46 back to the river, those are the subdivided lots. They should be left as the subdivided lots. No one ever bought any of those 10- or 12-acre lots thinking, "Gee, in 40 years, I'm going to break this up into 1-acre lots." That's fiction. But we're seeing that happen today with Hillsborough Cove. What, now, whenever we bring this up, people are going to start talking about property rights, and that's what ought to be talked about. But what are property rights? I can't build a high-rise in my front yard. I can't put a Ferris wheel in my front yard. Zoning is all about, it's very simple. It's all about creating a rational pattern of development for an area to create a greater public good, period. That's what it is, a rational pattern of development. Having this wonderful 5-acre and upzoning and then interspersing little dense developments really doesn't make any sense. My neighbors and my constituents are stunned, we're stunned and are stunned, to learn that we don't have 5-acre zoning throughout the whole area, because they read the land use plan. Shame on them, they believed it. They got on the internet, and they looked at it, and it calls for rural preservation all west of the Harpeth River. So they are shocked, appalled, horrified to find out that there are these little sections, little interspersed areas where you can have 1-acre zoning. So really, I think three things. I think we need a larger conversation about zoning. I think we need to implement the land use plan, and I think we really need to pay attention to the fact that our zoning ordinance itself subordinates itself explicitly to the land use plan, and we need to live up to that. Thank you.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments to make. I certainly support the rezoning of this property. I think it's something that should be done. But anytime, being a product of the Franklin Board of Mayor and Alderman and being concerned about downzoning, there are some things that I want to make absolutely clear. And Mike, if I could, just ask a question, and I simply want to get this on the public record, okay? Mike, the residents, all of the property owners in this particular plan have asked that their property be rezoned to the recommended zoning. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The 19 property owners in this particular resolution all requested it, and that's the case with the 54 that I mentioned earlier as well.
But I'm going to ask this on every question, because I would worry a little bit, again, what I've seen over the years, five years from now, and I want a record of what we're doing. So right now, we're saying that every property owner wants their property to be downzoned. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Danner?
Commissioner Langston pretty much asked the same question, but I just want to make sure, I understand this resolution 100%, but I think the confusion comes from, one of the speakers said 82% of the property owners. But this will be true for all four of these, that once we amend those who have changed their mind out, 100% of the landowners are volunteering to downsize?
That's correct.
Downzone, okay. Fine, I'm good. That is a no-brainer.
Any other discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 314-8, signify by pushing your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Resolution passes. Let's see here, moving on. Resolution, and this will also be a public hearing, Resolution 314-9, Resolution to amend the official zoning map originally adopted May 14, 2012, as it relates to amending the zoning district of properties along Old Hillsborough Road and Del Rio Pike. So I'll now open the public hearing pertaining to Resolution 314-9. Yeah, Mike? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, just quickly, this is a request to rezone a number of parcels along Old Hillsborough Road and Del Rio Pike from their present zoning, which is a combination of suburban infill and conservation and rural preservation 1, 2, rural preservation 5. Staff recommends approval again of this resolution, and actually, the planning commission, just like the last resolution, voted unanimously to recommend approval of this resolution as well. However, as we talked about a little earlier, the owners of four parcels associated with this resolution have since withdrawn their request. The resolution identifies 31 property owners. There are actually 27 now. So four of those parcels will need to be excluded from your motion, and those parcels are Map 51, Parcel 10.08, Map 51, Parcel 11.04, Map 51, Parcel 11.05, and Map 51, Those are Map 51, Parcel 10.08, Map 51, Parcel 11.04, Map 51, Parcel 11.05, and Map 51,
Got it. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution 314-9. If you'll come forward and state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Laura Turner. I live at 1108 Dickinson Lane. Over a quarter of a century ago, I was standing in the same room with my young children, who went to the old Grassland Elementary School. They now have children of their own, and they are growing up and enjoying our county's beautiful country. Back then, we were thankful that the western side of Old Hillsborough Road was being downzoned from 1 acre to 5 acres. This downzoning helped encourage and grow the town-and-country lifestyle that Franklin and Williamson County depended on for heritage tourism dollars. A decade later, West Haven brought more density out our way, adversely impacting our treasured rural roads. Under that pressure, and with the help of a historic preservation doctoral student at MTSU, we nominated and received recognition for the Harpeth River Valley as one of the top 10 most endangered scenic places in America, with the designation of being called a last-chance landscape. The recession lulled our community quiet, and we woke up abruptly with the news that a dense 1-acre subdivision was going to be built, right in the face of the Old Natchez Trace. Thankfully, the dense Del Webb plans on rural Del Rio Pike were rejected by the Franklin Mayor and Alderman in December. Citizens for Old Natchez Trace was formed a year ago, when plans to widen the trace and remove trees along this oldest, still-operational road in the United States were marching forward. Our slogan was, "Help us save Old Natchez Trace. We want it paved in place, not erased." And this plea marshaled up a citizen army vocal on the value and their love of the trace. We are grateful to county leaders for hearing our voices and adopting a sensitive template for the repaving of Old Natchez. Not only does this sensitive approach protect and preserve the trace, but the cost to the county is significantly less than utilizing the usual cut trees and widen road model. We hope other county roads, rural roads, will benefit from this template. In Old Natchez Trace's 4 miles, there are 9 national historic register sites. There are 2 more national register sites across Old Hillsborough Road on Del Rio. The altruistic downzoning being heard tonight of property owners who are voluntarily reducing the development value of their land to protect and preserve the integrity of this pastoral landscape is indeed unprecedented. Our community has historically tried to retain the historic scenic and cultural resources that we are abundantly blessed with. It is our responsibility to ensure that future generations can enjoy these treasures, not just read about them in a book. We just learned from the ground-penetrating radar study commissioned by the owners at Old Town and conducted by New South Associates, that radar reveals 182 prehistoric stone box graves under and along the Old Natchez Trace. This ancient, old road is our county's national treasure. These voluntary downzonings by our community's property owners will help preserve and protect the integrity of the Old Natchez Trace and this last-chance landscape for generations to come. We need real rural preservation, not density devastation. Thank you.
My name is Mike Coyne. I live at 1577 Old Hillsborough Road, and even though I'm for the resolution, I'm probably not going to get any ovation when I get done. I've owned my property 31 acres for over 20 years now, and have thoroughly enjoyed living here. I live in the middle of all the parcels, but I have chosen to remain RP1. And I'm 2 doors down from the Hillsborough Cove where it's going in. By choosing not to be rezoned, it doesn't reflect my concern for my lifestyle, for the beauty, et cetera. And I'm for the downzoning requested by people who own property, and that's what they're choosing to do. And I respect those choices. My question is, and I've looked at the map, and I've been following this since the planning commission, and I see all the different colors, and I see that I'm going to be a color that's going to be surrounded by other colors, and I'm not going to be in the majority. And I think I heard the answer to, possibly, to this question, but my question for you is, is there anything that prevents a future commission like this to look at the mass of one color surrounding a few other colors and to say, "We need to go ahead and just turn everything into RP5," or, "It doesn't matter what was chosen, what it was when I moved in 20 years ago?" That's really what my question is. But I do endorse the decision that's being made by everybody out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dory Bowles, the executive director for the Harpeth River Watershed Association. I also live in the county in the 10th District, and I'm going to be very brief tonight. I'm just going to focus on 2 points, because all the main points that I would make have been made by the county commissioners or prior speakers. I thought I would just focus for a minute on the value of the Harpeth River Valley from the standpoint of water quality to the Harpeth River system. Our organization is a science-based conservation organization, and we do a lot of work on river restoration, watershed, land use planning, stormwater, clean water law. And you may know that I'm the vice chair of the Stormwater Appeals Board for here in the county, and I served on the Count Plan Land Use Plan Update Forum. So there's been a lot of discussion about land use and how it can help protect water quality. And the Harpeth River Valley is one of those very important areas for the river system. For those of us who live out there, I don't live out there, but I'm out there a lot. Meeting of the Waters, just by its name, will tell you that we have a huge floodplain in this area, and I provided some maps to you in our comments so you could look at that. The Meeting of the Waters is, actually, is the bathtub for the upper 40% of the Harpeth River system. So it's draining Franklin, upper Williamson County, southern Williamson County. So a lot of the old growth that didn't conform to old stormwater designs we have today, there's a lot more water in the river than there was in the 80s. The Army Corps, I'm sorry, FEMA will be coming out with new floodplain maps. That's going to be a comprehensive new update for the entire river system, all the counties the river runs through, based on a huge amount of field studies. The last actual pinpointed field work in this area of the river system was in 1988. And so we asked the Army Corps of Engineers to do a map. They do this all the time. They'll plot things for you on maps. So we happened to take the Hillsborough Cove subdivision, because it's right there in the Meeting of the Waters, but it applies to this whole general area. So just for comparison, the 100-year flood in this area is 609 feet above sea level. I'm going to round, if that's okay, 609. The 500-year floodplain is 612, and the May 2010 flood was 615. So we have almost a 6-foot difference between the May 2010 flood and the 100-year floodplain. It's probably, you'll probably, it's an expert's best guess, we will know in June, hopefully, if they push it back from April to June, what's going to happen in this area. But I think one of the things we want to, the one reason why RP5 is so important is that we don't have a whole lot of developmental area out there anyway. Most of it is in the floodplain. And so if you have 1-acre subdivision, RP1, you enable lots of more density in the buildable area. So RP5 helps to maintain that sort of rural look in the area that is buildable. And in the case of out in Old Hillsborough Road, that buildable area is along the road, because, you know, so it doesn't maintain the scenic landscape when you're driving down the road. You have the floodplains in the back. And then just to wrap up, you're right, Commissioner Danner, all the items, all of the items tonight are for everybody who's submitted and voluntarily requested to downzone. There are others that have been signed. Some have gone through planning commission. They're just not here tonight for you. There might be one more batch before it's all said and done. So that's where some of the folks are saying there's over 90% support. You just don't have all of it in front of you tonight. But I just wanted you to know, it's been really wonderful working with the community out there. It's very complicated. It's hard to get your mind around zoning and land use plans and floodplain maps. And so really appreciate working with everybody, and thank you tonight for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of planning, I mean, the county commission. My name is Richard Warden, Sr. I live at 3240 Del Rio Pike, Franklin, Tennessee, 37069. For those of you who are familiar with the area, where I live is very near the end of, the western end of Del Rio Pike. For almost 200 years, there was only one house out there, and that was Meeting of the Waters. 1992, Carolyn and I were able to buy a small piece of property, a couple of parcels, and build our home out there, and for about 15 years, there were only 2 houses on Del Rio Pike, right on our end. We really liked that, frankly. We love the rural setting. Getting ahead of myself just a little bit here, but in the 1980s, Irene and Ridley Wills bought Meeting of the Waters. They also bought 50 acres or so on the north side of Del Rio Pike and 65 acres on the south side. That's the way the property remained for quite some time, and then around 2000, the year escapes me, the Two Rivers subdivision started to be developed. These folks here will know exactly when that was. But when that happened, we narrowly dodged a bullet. Some developer, and I don't know who that was, was going to go in there and put these 1-acre homes in that beautiful piece of property. Well, we had an angel investor who I still don't know who that is, and I heard, I've heard this story. I hadn't really talked directly to anybody about it. He went in and bought it and said, "No, it's not going to happen. You know, we're going to divide this up into horse farm parcels." And that's what he did, and we'll be forever grateful to him. Six or seven years ago, Susan and Todd Kastner bought a piece of property in between Meeting of the Waters and our home, and put their horse barn out there first, and then they built their house. Todd became a gentleman farmer, even had a small, he even has a small herd of black Angus, which I can speak to firsthand, because I've helped him pull the breech calves. I know he's in business. Ridley and Irene decided to sell out for personal reasons and move back into town. But anyway, before Ridley did that, and Irene, they put that 65 acres across Del Rio Pike, directly across the street from me, in the Tennessee Land Trust. It can only be used for agricultural purposes, and that means somebody could build a barn and live in 15% of it. I'm told that 65 acres forevermore is going to sit there almost like a park. With Meeting of the Waters, Mr. Cashier, and Todd, and Susan, and my property, all of us going to 5 acres, we're in agreement with that. We want to keep that rural preservation for people to enjoy, for our children, our grandchildren, great-grandchildren, in my case, great-grandchildren, to enjoy forever. That gives you a picture of Del Rio Pike and the corridor down Del Rio Pike with the 3 property owners and the land trust. The picture that Commissioner Brockman painted for that area going down Old Hillsborough Road, going to the river, if you can picture in your mind just for a minute the state of Florida, it's long, narrow, pointing south. Where we are out there, it's long and narrow, pointing north. The only way to get into the property that's under question here tonight, along Old Hillsborough Road from the north, is to come across a bridge over the Harpeth River, or from the east, coming over the Little Bridge, over the Little Harper, or coming from the direction of Leapers Fork. We've got a problem out there... We've got a, we've got a problem out there. It's kind of getting worse over time. It started with a big development on 96, but the traffic has increased dramatically. We, TDOT monitors the traffic with a traffic counter at Old Bethlehem Loop Road. And that's, that's not really telling the story because all the people that come down 96, coming both from the east and the west, turning up Old Hillsborough Road, they don't go to Bethlehem Loop Road in all cases, so they don't get counted. The state has got something like 4,400 ADT. The actual ADT in that section between Old Natchez, Del Rio, and Highway 96 is 6,700 cars a day. And that might not sound too bad until you realize that probably 80% of them come in there and two, through there in two hours in the morning or two hours in the afternoon. We got a video of that. It's just almost unbelievable, boy, the traffic piles up there. This development that's been mentioned here tonight, going in with 20 houses, going more than double the number of houses on the east side of Old Hillsborough Road in that section from Del Rio. So what we're asking you tonight is consider the traffic on Old Hillsborough Road is already out of hand. The probability of TDOT doing something to it is just about nil because they don't have any money to even build something like the Mack Hatcher, much less work on our road out there. It is state road, Highway 46. So what we're asking you to do is go with us tonight on this five-acre proposal. Let's limit the number of houses that are going to be built there. Vote for our proposal to change this from Rural Preservation 1 and the other one acre to Rural Preservation 5. And I thank you very much.
Any other, anyone else wishing to speak? Last call. We'll close the public hearing on Resolution 314-9. A resolution to amend official zoning map originally adopted May 14, 2012, as it relates to amending the zoning district of properties along Old Hillsborough Road in Del Rio Pike. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Brockman, Commissioner Wilson II. You want to explain this one, Commissioner Brockman, and then we'll do the amendment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, but I do need to read a statement. Because I own real property within the area that is subject to the rezoning before the County Commission, I may have an indirect conflict of interest in the resolution to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of this, that this body represents. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kastner?
I have the same statement to read. Because I own real property within the area subject to the rezoning before the County Commission, I may have an indirect conflict of interest in the resolution to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents. Thanks.
Very good. Commissioner Brockman, you want to explain this resolution?
Let me just again say that this was the first batch, so to speak, that percolated up in July and August. The property owners spoke out and said they didn't want a, quote, "domino effect" to take place once they had heard about the development that was being proposed. And so the initiative began and people signed the petitions and said, I'm in. My husband is not here tonight. He would be here in support. I asked him right off the bat, what do you think? I know he loves me, but he also disagrees with me when he thinks I'm not correct. But in this case, he said absolutely, 100%. Not only is it the right thing to do, but I believe it preserves the value of our farm, which is 114 acres. And he's out with some bankers tonight. Thank you.
Laws is not developers.
No.
Commissioner Kastner, did you, you co-sponsor this? Did you want to address it?
Similarly, I agree with Mary. This is just such the right thing to do. And the support amongst the constituency and the neighbors has just been overwhelmingly positive. I think some of the people, well, I know that, having talked to them, some of the people who have opted out, you know, really are opting out because, as they've told me, you know, they're in support of it, were it for everyone, but if it was not for everyone, they would, they would choose to sit out. So there's a few, and I understand that. We really do need to have a larger conversation at some point about the whole area. But for these folks, these 54 owners to step up and downzone is one incredible statement. And I think Mary said it earlier, this is really unprecedented, very, very positive. I would, I would move that we amend the resolution to reflect the opting out of parcels. The Dent Property, map 51, parcel 10.08. Rosengarten, map 51, parcels 11.04, 11.05. And map 51, the Simmons Property, parcel 10.03.
Proper motion and second. Commissioner Langston? All right. Any discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Barnwell?
No, thank you.
On the amendment? Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? I see none. The amendment's loaded, so we'll vote on that. If you're in favor of the amendment, which is deleting those four properties, 10.08, 11.04, 11.05, and 10.03. If you're in favor of that, push your yes button and confirm.
Yeah, it's, it took it.
Oh, we voted? Oh, okay.
It's failing to record.
All right. Anyone wish to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23, yes, zero, no.
All right. The amendment passes, so we're now back to the Resolution 314-9 is amended. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Barnwell?
No, thank you.
Any discussion? I see none. Commissioner Dwight Jones?
Chrissy, would you like to address the gentleman's question that he had, if you can?
I can, Commissioner. Thank you. I believe the question was related to the potential for rezoning the parcels where there has not been a petition received. As you see on the map, there are some parcels that are addressed. And just real quickly, while I'm up here, Commissioner Ford asked me, the map that we provided to you does not include the parcels that we're having to exclude via amendment. So what you have in front of you is what the map will look like should all of these resolutions be approved excluding those that we no longer have the request on. Okay? To answer the question about the rezoning, the way the process works in the zoning ordinance is before a map amendment can be initiated, and that's the key word, we have to have a request from the property owner via petition or letter, or the Planning Commission can vote to initiate a rezoning on the property, or the County Commission can initiate the rezoning via resolution, since that's how the County Commission acts. And so in order to rezone, you'd have to have one of those three things. Once it's initiated, then it would go to the step of a resolution, rezoning the property, which would go to the Planning Commission for consideration, and then here ultimately for the action.
Follow-up, Commissioner Jones?
I'm good. I just figured we'd give our final.
All right. Any further discussion on Resolution 314-9 as amended? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 314-9 as amended, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Next, we have a public hearing on Resolution 314-10, a resolution to amend the official zoning map originally adopted May 14, 2012, as it relates to amending the zoning district of property on Old Hillsborough Road. Mike?
Okay, this is a request to rezone one parcel on Old Hillsborough Road from its current zoning, which is suburban infill and conservation, to rural preservation 5. Once again, staff is recommending approval of this request, and the Planning Commission, again, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request.
All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 314-10. As in before, if you'll come up, state your name and your address, and the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak to this resolution? I see none.
My name is Susan Kastner. I live at 3210 Del Rio Pike. And yes, I am Commissioner Kastner's wife. But what you need to understand is that I've been a political animal for about 15 years, much to his long suffering for that, and we do speak somewhat independently. And I'd like to point out something here tonight. I've thrown away my notes, so I didn't want to be redundant. And there's something here that I'd like to bring up that nobody has brought up. And that is, as a political animal, as I'm looking at the people behind me, and as I've gone door to door and I've spoken to people about this issue, there is a crowd of people out here begging for your leadership on rural preservation. This is not about Old Hillsborough Road. This is not about a clutch of community people. This is about an area of the county that defines this county in many, many ways. And if we decide that we're going to pave over all of this county indiscriminately, we're going to lose what makes Williamson County special. We will be a bunch of old buildings in the middle of town, some of historic, some are not, but which has lost its setting. And I would tell you, at that point, we will be like hundreds of once formerly small suburban areas outside of metropolitan area that have been overgrown, and they have lost what has made them special. And there's hundreds of them out there, whether they're around Atlanta, whether they're around Birmingham, whether they're around Memphis. They get paved over and they lose the things that are special to them. But I want to go back to, we're begging for leadership. And I don't think that those of you that are running for reelection are out there going, let's wait for the federal government to tell us what to do. Let's wait for the state to tell us what to do. As I look at campaigns and politicking, what I hear is, I want local solutions for local problems. And yet, I've listened and I've heard, we're waiting for FEMA. For four years, we've had a flood of great proportions. We know that there is land that is flooded, but that is now still available to be built on because we're waiting for the federal government to tell us what to do? And then I heard Mr. Warden talking about our traffic problems. And we're waiting for the Tennessee Department of Transportation. I would like my local government to solve my local problems. And I think that the citizens of this county would overwhelmingly agree. And I would like to encourage this body to step up and to look for creative solutions to this problem because they are out there. Other communities have solved this problem, and we can do it. And you have a tremendous number of people that would like you and that will support you in that process. Thank you.
Any other comments as it relates to Resolution 314-10?
Michael Myers, 2097 Hillsborough Road, Franklin, 9th District. I would just like to say, as a result of these wide swings of rezoning, something that we've never done on this kind of scale before, that we should be cautious because the majority is not present here. Obviously, the people in this room definitely support this, and that's fine. But the law that we have right now reflects the majority decision that we've made through that grueling 12-month process that defined it. And I think that's our authority here, and we need to not forget that. They're not present in the room. But what they decided is here, and that's the law we currently have. So we need to use caution here when we start doing this kind of thing. We don't do it on a regular basis. This is a new phenomenon. And if these people want to do this to their own property, that's, that's okay. But I've already heard some people talk about worrying about they're in this infill now and they're surrounded. So I just wanted to remind you, you know, that the majority isn't in the room, okay? And we already know what they think.
Any other comments on Resolution 314-10?
Steve King, 1695 Old Hillsborough. My wife and I are contributing our property to the rezoning. One question I have for you is, why do we have to rezone in the first place? My understanding was that it was impossible to get a septic approval in Williamson County for anything less than five or 10 acres of property. Has anybody ever heard that before? Does that sound familiar to anybody? You're nodding. At least one person has heard. I'm seeing several nods. What has changed with regard to septic approvals? I went by the sanitation department or whatever, the solid waste department, and what they said was, that's just a myth. So I asked if the regs have changed. No. If anything, it got more restrictive. So I would like for somebody, you guys run the show, I assume, and, you know, that office answers to you. Can somebody here look into what has changed? Why can you now have 20 acres with 20 septic tanks on them, all draining, I guess, into the Harpeth River a few hundred feet away? Anyway, that's my comment. I guess I don't need to speak to the approval itself. I'm obviously in support of it. But that's it. Thank you.
I see none. Last call. We'll close the public hearing. Moving on, Resolution 314-10, a resolution to amend the official zoning map originally adopted May 14, 2012, as it relates to amending the zoning district of property on Old Hillsborough Road. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Brockman, Commissioner Kastner II. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman.
Thank you. As to this individual petition, they were in, and then they were out, and now they're back in. So there is a consistent voluntary effort on the part of this single property owner, and that's why they're separate. Thank you.
Mr. Kastner?
Under agreement with her position.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 314-10, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
23, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Next, we have a public hearing on Resolution 314-11, a resolution to amend the official zoning map originally adopted May 14, 2012, as it relates to amending the zoning district of properties along Old Hillsborough Road. Mike?
Okay, this final request is to rezone a number of properties along Old Hillsborough Road from the current zoning, which is a combination of suburban infill and conservation and rural preservation 1 to rural preservation 5. Again, staff recommends approval of the request. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval as well. However, as we mentioned earlier, the owners of two parcels have withdrawn their request. The resolution refers to nine properties. There are now seven. And the parcels whose owners have requested a withdrawal are map 38, parcel 24.05, and map 38, parcel 24.12. And the proposed zoning map that was distributed to you earlier tonight already did remove those properties.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on Resolution Number 314-11. And as before, if you'd come up, state your name and address. Public hearing is now open. Last call. Last call. I see none. We'll close the public hearing. Moving on, Resolution Number 31411, a resolution to amend the official zoning map originally adopted May 14, 2012, as it relates to amending the zoning district of properties along Old Hillsborough Road. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Kestner II. Explanation, Commissioner Brockman.
Thank you. I think you understand the issue. These are nonmore parcels that came on after the original 31. And again, these are properties that are along Old Hillsborough and will be going to RP 5 voluntarily.
And I'd like to make the motion that we remove the two parcels that where the owners have requested to be removed, map parcel, or map 38, parcel 24.05, and map 38, parcel 24.12.
Proper motion. Commissioner Ryan II. All right. Is it loaded? We'll vote on the amendment. So if you're, first of all, any discussion on the amendment? I see none. You're ready to vote? We're voting on the amendment. If you're in favor of amending these two parcels, 2405 and 2412, out of the resolution, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
The amendment passes. Now, back to the main resolution as amended. Resolution 31411 as amended. And so I'll enter, we've already got a motion and the amendment. Any discussion on the resolution as amended?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just say one final comment of support for this, and again, thank you for everyone who came out and to address the issue of a change. This change has overwhelming support. And so I want everybody to understand that it has not been done without a lot of scrutiny. The planning commission, the planning staff has detailed why this change makes sense, and the property owners are doing it voluntarily. And again, even the property owners who have not signed or have pulled support rural preservation in this area, and they want to see this same district go forward and be contiguous and represent really the best of who it can be. And then finally, I'd just like to go out in a bang, right? Somebody said, so you're really stirring things up, Commissioner Brockman. But this is all, it's all a positive for this county and for these property owners. And I just, again, want to thank them so much.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Kestner?
Commissioner Brockman is correct. There is overwhelming support for this. And this conversation that's going on and this coalescing of all of these neighbors and constituents has been going on since July and August of last year. It's just, I know this is the first night that most of you or some of you have heard about this, but really, this is about an eight-month process that you're seeing the very tail end of at this point. So thank you.
You ready to vote on Resolution 31411? If you're in favor, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we'll take about a 10-minute recess. So we'll see you about 10 after 9:00. Moving on the agenda, Resolution 3141, resolution directing revenue designated for road purposes that is collected from the Williamson County Business Tax that exceed $3,450,000, and funds collected from the Williamson County Wheel Tax that exceed $3,500,000 for the fiscal year 2013-14 be redesignated to the general fund. Commissioner Danner? Mr. Little II. Explanation, Commissioner Danner?
Well, this is the thing we do every year where we get to, we collect these two taxes for the highway fund. And when we, in order to keep our five-year average, when we get to this point on both these taxes, the 3.45 and the 3.5, this county has opted to take any overage and put it back into the general fund.
Thank you. Let me get the committee report. Highway Commission, I assume, 5, 4, 0 against. Tax Study Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
All right. Any discussion on this resolution, as Commissioner Danner explained? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 3141, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to, anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Resolution passes. Resolution 3142, resolution appropriating and amending the Williamson County Sheriff's Department 2013-14 detention budget by $221,000. Revenue is to come from unappropriated fund balance.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hester is the second. Let's see. Law Enforcement Committee?
Four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Taking $221,000 out of the fund balance to put into the sheriff's department. They got more inmates than they had last year and more than expected, and there are costs associated with keeping the inmates in.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 3142, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 3143, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 juvenile court budget by $10,000 for a new youth services officer position. Revenue is to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Brockman?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Langston II. HR Committee?
Not positive, but I believe HR was three, four, and one against.
Okay. Law Enforcement? Law Enforcement?
Four, four, zero against.
All right. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a need because of the change within the judicial, now having a judge. And I wonder if Judge Goffey could come speak to this. That would be most helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, this is the beginning of our intake department that we're going to need since we are now a separate juvenile court. Currently, the judicial commissioners issue our petitions, and since we are a separate court, they're under a different department, it's important for us down the road to be issuing our own petitions. And rather than do it all in one lump sum, we're going to do it gradually, working with the judicial commissioners to supplement on nights and weekends and holidays for us. This will just be a daytime position to start that process.
Okay. Commissioner Ford, question?
Chairman, I was the one no vote on the HR Committee. Not that I don't believe this position may be a necessity and something that we should look at, but from the HR Committee, I wanted to see all of the personnel requests come together so we could evaluate those as a whole. So it's nothing against the judge and the work that they're doing over there. I think they're doing good work. Just felt like we should look at those from the HR Committee as a whole in a year when we've said no new positions.
Okay. Any further discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 3143, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, one, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 31412, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 parks and rec budget by $254,911 for startup operating and salary costs for the Nolanville Recreation Center. Revenue is to come from unappropriated county general funds.
Move for approval.
Mr. Little? Mr. Green, the second. Let's see. HR Committee?
Three in favor, one against.
Okay. Parks and Rec Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little or Green?
Yes, this is for the Nolanville Recreation Center for startup costs. They will start, projected opening is on June 1. And this is to give them the startup cost for getting people hired and in place and to get them through the budget year. And if they do not get it opened, then this money will just go back into the general fund. It'll be in next year's budget.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? Mr. Green, did you have a comment on this?
No, I just, that's for your support. We need to get it opened and up and running.
Very good. If you're in favor of Resolution 31412, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 31414, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 general sessions budget by $5,520. Revenue is to come from probation fees. Commissioner Jones? Mr. Green, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
I was going to let Commissioner Ford speak to these tonight. I thought I might not be here in time, so Commissioner Ford's agreed to speak to each of those each time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is probation, money coming from probation fees. It's for drug testing of inmates and people who come in before the courts. Ask for your support.
All right. Commissioner Hayes?
No.
Oh, okay.
Accidentally, sorry.
That's all right. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of 31414, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 31415, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 sheriff's office budget by $75,000. Revenue is to come from county general unappropriated fund balance and other direct federal revenue. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval. Second.
Mr. Little, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
I'll take this one too, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Appreciate the opportunity. We got $75,000 from the Department of Justice Asset Forfeiture Program, and we're going to Mississippi to buy, or I'm sorry, Missouri to buy some new squad cars.
Very good. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 31415, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, got it. Now, record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 31418, resolution to transfer funds in the amount of $95,000 from the highway fund balance and appropriate, and amend the 2013-14 capital projects fund by $95,000 for signalization at Sneed and Vaughn Road. Commissioner Davis?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Brockman, the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
It was four in favor, zero against.
All right. Highway Commission, 5, 4, 0 against, I believe. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
All right. Mr. Davis, you want to?
Just a few comments. This is an intersection at Steed and Vaughn that has long needed some type of help from a safety standpoint. Most of the residents out there have been very supportive of this for many years. The traffic count has been done by the Highway Department. It's over 10,000 vehicles a day going through an intersection. This is long overdue, so please support the signalization for that intersection.
Commissioner Brockman, you got a follow-up for Commissioner Kestner?
Yes, I absolutely need your support. People have gone through the stop sign that's at Vaughn, I don't know how many times, but the Currys have put that fence up at least 10 times. So it's definitely warranted. You just, people are speeding down Sneed, and you can't get out from Vaughn. So it's very proper to do this.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kestner, you got a comment on this?
I'm for it.
Okay. All right, thank you. And likewise, I co-sponsored it, and I am for it and encourage support. So any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor, what resolution number? Resolution 31418, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes.
Through some donations and memorials, and this is our ability to bring it into the system so we can actually spend it.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. Ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 31419, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 31421, we've pulled. Resolution 31422, we've pulled. Late file Resolution 31423, resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 health department budget by $2,788.43. Revenue is to come from donations. Commissioner Hancock?
I'll move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Public Health Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
This is a donation at Fairview and Hill. To get the funds for the children's waiting room area down there. And they're gonna, that's what they're gonna use the money for, I think. So I think that's what Mary told us.
Okay.
Appreciate you. It's hard to turn down a gift.
Any further discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of 31423, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Late file Resolution Number 31424, a resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 parks and recreation budget by $10,000. Revenue is to come from donations. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Mr. Jones, the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this is a donation that's given by Titans running back Chris Johnson to the Parks and Recreation Department. And I understand this is maybe the second or third time this has happened, so we thank Mr. Johnson for the gift. I encourage anyone to support it.
Very good. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 31424, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. And if, I saw Doug, but if y'all would pass on our appreciation to Chris Johnson, we would appreciate it and tell him thank you very much. Resolution, late file Resolution 31425, a resolution appropriating and amending the 2013-14 election commission budget by $48,105. Revenue is to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Little the second. Budget Committee?
4, 4, 1 against.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is funds that will be used, we're appropriating from the unappropriated county general funds, $48,105, and it'll be used for the May election. Those positions will.
So, I guess if we don't pass this, there won't be an election?
That probably, probably had to use a carrier pigeon or something.
Yeah, well, there you go. All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 31425, push your yes button. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution, late-file Resolution 31426, Resolution Appropriating And Amending The 2013-14 County Clerk's Budget By $15,000 For Additional Postage. Revenues To Come From Unappropriated County General Funds. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Wilson the second. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is for postage in the clerk's office. The number of license that's being renewed through the mail ma has increased dramatically, and this will come out of unappropriated county general funds. They need it for the postage.
Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 31426, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Late-file Resolution 31427, Resolution To Accept A Donation Of $1,000 From The City Of Berry Hill To The Williamson County Sheriff's Department And Appropriating And Amending The 2013-14 Williamson County Sheriff's Department Budget By $1,000. Revenues To Come From Donations. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hester the second. Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, this is a donation from the city of Berry Hill for $1,000, and that's pretty much the extent of my knowledge as it relates, but we do appreciate the $1,000. Sheriff might could want to say something else if he does. Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Berry Hill Police Department for years has used our firing range for qualification for their officers, and in lieu of that, they're donating $1,000 for us to use for maintenance of the reins there at the sheriff's office.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff. Very good. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 31427, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Late-file Resolution 31428, Resolution Appropriating And Amending The 2013-14 Parks And Rec Budget By $21,605. Revenues To Come From Donations.
Move for approval. Second.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes in, who was the second? Commissioner Little? Parks And Rec Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
All right. Explanation, Commissioner Beathard?
These are donations from various youth associations and retail businesses across the county.
Very good. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 31428, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution Accepting A Donation Of Real Property Located On Rocky Fork Road. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Green the second. Property Committee?
7, 4, 0 against.
Parks And Rec Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is a slither of property that Mr. Moon's gonna give Williamson County that ties to our park, and Doug's explanation was, we're gonna try to put some picnic tables across on the other side of the old bridge.
All right. Any discussion? I see none. If you're in favor of Resolution 31413, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 31416, A Resolution Accepting Donation Of A Nissan Armada To The Williamson County Sheriff's Office And Authorizing The Williamson County Mayor To Execute A Vehicle Donation Agreement With Nissan North America. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Little the second. Property Committee?
7, 4, 0 against.
Law Enforcement Committee?
Four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
I'll let Commissioner Ford pick that again.
Commissioner Ford, I'm sorry.
You get us mixed up all the time.
I do, I'm sorry. Y'all look so much alike.
It's the hair, that's why.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd like to thank Nissan for their fine donation of a Nissan Armada to be used by the county sheriff's department. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we passed a resolution where Nissan is putting some people into our sheriff's department for use in digital forensics and working with them and that, and this is to be used by those people. And so, we'd like to thank them again for their donation. I believe this is the second Armada that we've gotten from them.
Very good. Commissioner Danner?
Yes, just for the record, my husband and I both work for Nissan, so I have a direct conflict of interest, so I'm going to be abstaining. I'm not going to read my conflict of interest statement because I'm going to abstain my vote.
All right. Duly noted. You ready to vote? If you're in favor of Resolution 31416, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Abstain, your abstain button and confirm. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 31417, Resolution Authorizing The Williamson County Mayor To Execute A Memorandum Of Understanding With The City Of Franklin For The Provision Of Breathalyzer Test To City Employees. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Little the second. Law Enforcement Committee?
Four in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Ford?
I'm gonna let Commissioner Jones take it. Just kidding, just kidding. Should've seen your face, though. If there is a motor vehicle accident that includes a City of Franklin employee, they've asked the sheriff's department to administer the breathalyzer test for that, and we've been glad to be able to develop this contract to be able to do that.
Very good. Any discussion? Ready to vote? If you're in favor of 31417, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. John, Commissioner Hancock?
John.
There we go. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 31420, Resolution Authorizing The Williamson County Mayor To Enter Into An Agreement To Purchase Real Property Located At 9611 Clovercroft Road, Nolansville, Tennessee. Commissioner Hancock?
Move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Green the second. Highway Commission, assume 5, 4, 0 against. Property Committee?
7, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
5, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hancock?
This is some portion of the land that, parcel of the land that the Williamson County is wanting to buy, wanting to purchase, and Charles and Laura Flipping, I think they've maybe donated, I'm not real sure, coming out of the highway department's funds. And I move for approval.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Green?
Yeah, just to further explain that, it's where Pleasant Hill comes into Concord Road, or to Clovercroft Road. There's a hill coming up this way. There's not enough sight distance there. They're moving that intersection further east to give us some sight distance on the intersection.
All right. Any discussion? Commissioner Herbert?
How much is it going to cost the county? How much? Okay.
Yep. Eddie, you want to come up or?
Oh, that's okay. As Commissioner Green stated, this intersection of Pleasant Hill and Clovercroft does not have adequate sight distance. And by moving the road northeast, it will improve that. We will have what we need to have on this particular section of road.
Okay.
And the money is already in our budget. We just need to...
But the cost is $48,500?
The land is prated at 36 and some change.
Okay.
What the land prays at.
Okay. All right.
Right.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Eddie. Okay. If you're in favor of Resolution 31420, push your yes button and confirm. Opposed, your no button and confirm. Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three, yes, zero, no.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our agenda. Anybody have any further business?
Mr. Chairman, by my, I'd like to say one thing about the zoning.
Yes, sir.
It was almost like deja vu sitting here because a group from Montpel Farms was a catalyst for the zoning that took place in the '80s. They absolutely are the group that started it, been in my ear, and Frank Calcott's ear, and everybody else's ear, and got it done. And so, I just, it's like history repeating itself.
There you go.
So, they'll get it done too.
There you go. There be no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.